We want to make sure that you're hiding it so people can see it.
Well, now call to order the meeting of the Madison County Board of Education. First on our agenda is to read the mission. Mr. Rutherford, would you do that for us?
Madison County Schools in partnership with the community strives to equip educators and students with the skills to lead by example, develop and speak with a unique voice, and explore their academic curiosity to make a positive impact on our community and world.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move right into the showcase.
All right. First for our student showcase tonight is Kit Carson Elementary. Kit Carson had the honor to have Louis and Reagan Mancy as principals for the day. Mister and Miss Mancy proudly provided direction to 550 students, 70 staff members. This real-world experience gave the Mancy children the opportunity to practice what it is like to obtain and perform in a leadership position. Both students were required to perform job tasks such as classroom observations, create a budget for student materials, and make positive connections with parents and community members, just to name a few. They've been anxiously awaiting their opportunity to share this experience with you. They are joined by Kit Carson's principal, Jane Anderson.
All right. My name is Louis Mancy. I am a fifth grade student at Kit Carson Elementary. I was principal for a day on November 1st. I would like to thank Ms. Anderson for not only being a wonderful first-grade teacher, but for a great principal and leader, and for this amazing, real-world opportunity. I learned that the jobs you think might be easy aren't that easy at all. I worked on a budget, did classroom observations, made parent phone calls, met with food services, met with PTO officers, had a parent meeting, and so much more. And that was just in one day! Being a principal is a big job with a lot of responsibility and hard work. One day, I think that I will be a great principal. I hope to be as great as Ms. Anderson. So first, we completed a resume and application. I met with Dr. Brumball to review and sign an official Madison County contract.
Your sister?
Yes. Reagan met Dr. Brumball to review and sign the contract as well. And I learned about pay, retirement, and taxes. And I had a health and physical with Nurse Robin, I don't know how to say her last name, to make sure that we are ready and fit for work. And we are. And I was dressed for success.
Was your sister?
Yes, she was. And Mr. Gillum came, and so did Ms. Burford and Ms. Cobb. And we did classroom observation rounds, one for each grade, and site visits and everything. It was a lot of fun. And Reagan and I both were doing classroom observations. I think those are both in Ms. Boxer's room. And we worked with Ms. Anderson and Ms. Long to plan healthy meals for Kit Carson's Thanksgiving and Christmas meals. Working with Ms...I worked with Ms. Beecham on the budget. Wow, she doesn't like to spend money. Mr. Woods approves. And I approved the munis. And Reagan and I both developed a budget for Coach Courtney and Ms. Cornet to purchase materials for Kit Carson's students.
Do you know materials they will actually receive? They've done a request to purchase, and you sort of want to find these to do this, so...
And I met with the guidance counselor for the day. We had like a work lunch. I even had a parent meeting in the middle of it.
And if you're honest, you was not all happy about this.
Nope, I wasn't, not at all. And I supervised and helped my friends in the cafeteria. And finally, lunchtime. Ms. Long and the chefs are amazing. Restaurant-quality food at Kit Carson people. And we made positive connections and phone calls to parents, and those are very important. And I made more positive connections. And Kit Carson PTO members stopped by to have a special visitor come in December. I signed to make it official. Shh, it's a surprise. This day was longer than I anticipated.
So now we cut the tie, and then we go loose in the tie, and then the tie is gone. Not the end of the day.
Yes, it's official. Long day, the tie is off. The heels Reagan wore didn't last long, but she tried. Why did she wear heels today, Reagan? Because Ms. Anderson wears heels every day. Needless to say, being a principal is not as easy as I thought, but I made it, and I was a great leader for Kit Carson's staff, students, and families. It's 5:30, 6:00 PM. I'm only resting my eyes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mancy, Ms. Mancy. Appreciate the work you did that day out of Kit Carson. All right, next for our student showcase is Foley Middle School. Foley Middle School's visual arts classes have been studying about sculptural forms using a variety of materials. Ms. Patricia Weiner is now here to tell you a little bit more.
At Foley Middle School, which I'm very passionate about, the art program there, we do a lot of two-dimensional work, but when we get to the three-dimensional stuff, my students just absolutely fall in love with it. But we go beyond just using ceramics. We like to get into the metal, and this year we were invited to do a cardboard project. With our metal mask, we usually start with a template. The kids get to choose a popular culture image, like Lethal Boon or Spider-Man, and every now and then you have a student who has to design their own mask. It has to fit within the metal, because we don't want to throw out metal, it's expensive. But the metal we're using is an aluminum foil and foil, so it's very durable for the kids to use. We use Boswood tools with that. Right here, we talk a lot about safety before we begin, because it is aluminum, it is metal, it is sharp. There are times where you feel like you might hurt yourself, but it's really not. Once the students have their image, you start to transfer it over to our aluminum. And we have to emboss it. It's actually called metal replica. Here's the next one. And you can see here, I've got students already working on it. You want to have a nice, big cushion of newspaper under your metal when you work, so that you can pop that metal out. The students do worry when they start to stretch this, that they're going to break through it, but if you go slowly and soft like that, it won't tear. If it does tear, it's just metal, and you push it back together and fix it. You see there, they're starting to cut it. Because it's such a thin piece of metal, they can actually use scissors to cut that, with sharp scissors, as I go. You see they're working there with the embossing, the Boswood tools. So we have a few examples here. We show the next. We color these with Sharpie, and then we want to antique it. Since we can't put paint on this kind of metal because of the chemical, we use Sharpie, and then by taking the steel wool across it, it starts to reveal some of the metal underneath it, gives it that nice antique look.
Wow.
So they usually pick things that are interesting at the time, but you can tell that we did this really close to Halloween. So there's a lot of Pennywise and different masks like that. Then a movie that came out, so they were watching things like that. After our metal project, we actually were invited by the Berea Arts Council to participate in a new exhibit they were doing this year, and it's called Fantastic Rubbish from Trash to Treasure. So this is one of our pieces here. And this is actually a seventh-grade student that made this piece. And we can show the next. The invitation is a professional show at the Berea Arts Council Gallery on Chestnut Street in Berea. And the students, Foley students, are the only students that are on exhibit. The rest are all professional artists from another community. Some of the artists are from Lexington as well. The goal was to reuse as many materials as you could, and since we're cool, cardboard is very easily accessible. So we, while we were working with it, I told them that we want to use as much of the original color for the cardboard as possible. So this pink actually came from a box, I think it was for donuts, and then this one here was for muffins. I think I allowed them to use Sharpie, but only a black Sharpie or a white or black temper paint. With the cardboard, this was one of those projects that the entire school kind of got passionate about, because they wanted to see what was going on. And we have an amazing cafeteria staff that's here today, but they saved us tons of boxes. And I get an email from Angela asking if I needed more boxes. One of our parents went out to the dollar store to pick up white boxes. I have kids that...she'll show the picture. There's that chicken right there. This kid was passionate about that chicken. And he's a seventh grader, and that is on display at the gallery. And when we were there for the opening night, like professional artists were coming up, they were just amazed that this was a seventh-grade student that made this. But he is a farmer, and he actually shows chickens at the state fair. And when I introduced the project to the kids, he said, "Can I bring in a picture of the chicken?" And I said, "Sure." And he comes in, and he starts telling me all about the old white English, yeah, the old white English chicken. And he wanted it to look just like his chicken, so he worked very passionately on it. Every day, he would want to go and show another creature in the hallway. So they were coming down to see his chicken. The sea turtle, let me show some more. These are the ones that are currently on display at the gallery. The show is up until December 20th. It's an amazing exhibit, and our students actually have the entire wall on display. And it's just amazing, because when you come in, you see professional artists, some that are well-known, and then you see our student work right there on display. So it's great. We like to work with a variety of good materials. There's always something you can manipulate and play with and work with, and the kids, they just want to see what they can make. So just providing them the different materials, just let them go with it, with the guidance. But our metal project is perhaps a school favorite. I think when Miss Gallion walked in, she knew how to make this, because it's a school favorite. And then my sixth graders, they see that the first year, and in seventh grade, they say, "We're doing that yet." By eighth grade, they're like, "It's metal here, we get to what they did." This is the first time we had done a recycled cardboard project, but it was so popular that my other kids are like, "Do we get to do that too?" So I'm going to be thrown right into the mix. But please go out to Berea Arts Council, it's in Berea, it's on Chestnut Street. And the show is up through 20th. It's amazing works. Of course, I found this because, you know, it's funny, but our teachers do love looking for cardboard. But, thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on into our recognition.
Our first recognition for the night is the Sparkling School Award. This month, that is presented to the custodial staff at Waco Elementary School. Congratulations to custodians Michael Reed, Brittany Kirby, and Stephen Cole on doing such a great job keeping Waco in great shape. So come on forward, Waco. Thank you. All right, next, we want to recognize our food service staff. And the competition this month was Best Cooks with the Books. And Mr. Anderson, if you don't mind, step up and tell us what that is before I read the rest of this.
So what we try to do is educate the elementary school students on how to eat healthy. And so each month, we take 30 books, and we give them to each of the elementary schools, and they revolve around a food item. So it could be an apple, it could be an orange, it could be watermelon, broccoli, those type things. And then throughout the month, we make different foods. So every food we can think of, using broccoli or watermelon, and we feature that for that month. And then cooks give the students a book. So each, a classroom teacher will get a set of 25, and then the chefs will hand out books to students who seem to take a lot of interest in that fruit or vegetable that we serve that month. And so we call it Cooks with Books, and we've been doing it second year now.
All right. So tonight, we're going to recognize the winner of the Best Cooks with Books event for November, and that is Foley Middle School. The cafeteria for Foley Middle School is here tonight to be recognized. Congratulations. And last, we want to recognize Madison Middle School counselor Candy Murphy. She was named the Kentucky School Counselors Association Outstanding Middle School Counselor for the Year. Ms. Murphy was presenting the award during the KSCA's annual fall conference. Congratulations to Ms. Murphy. Please come forward. Thank you.
Okay, now we've done the best part of the meeting. Let's move on to any audience comments regarding the agenda. None. Consent agenda. Next are the questions concerning the consent agenda. Are there any questions? Hearing none. The items to be approved of the consent agenda are the minutes of the October 24th meeting, claims, the superintendent's personnel actions, leave of absence, the following out-of-state trips, Madison Southern High School cheerleader trip to Sevierville, Tennessee on December 7th, the Madison Central High School cheerleader trip to Sevierville, Tennessee on December 7th, the Madison Southern High School boys' basketball team trip to Boca Raton, Florida, December 31st through the 5th, the B. Michael Cottle Middle School eighth-grade band trip to Cincinnati, Ohio on January the 9th, and the Madison Central High School softball team trip to Fort Walton, Florida, April 4th through the 9th. Also on the agenda is to approve the KETS offer of assistance in the amount of $94,281, and to approve the shortened school day application. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Rutherford. Do I have a second?
No, second.
Second by Ms. Cobb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on to our action agenda. We received our 2019 audit report, and I believe Stiles, Carter, and Associates, and we have Mr. Woosley. He's going to give us a report.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I was in Reddick last night, and they wanted to know if I could do it in five minutes. So they'd had about an hour and a half of our student suspension hearings prior to the regular board meeting, so it was a long night. Thank you for having me here tonight. I really appreciate the superintendent and the board working with us again. I want to thank Mr. Woods. His team is excellent. You couldn't ask for better people to work with. They're always ready, get us anything we need very quickly, and we certainly appreciate their expertise in what they do, because it makes our job and the ability to perform the audit a lot smoother when you have qualified people that are excellent to work with. So I want to make sure that I thank them. So I do have a few financial highlights for you. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to take those. You did receive an unmodified opinion, which means you are complying with all the requisite standards. As you probably know, there is a new red book, though, for this year. It was effective November 1st, so that did get approved, and it's now current guidance. So there were some changes, not anything, I don't think, significant as far as a detrimental effect to the districts. I think most everything in there is a positive change as we move forward. So I think that's a, it's a good idea to update that, and it had not been updated since 2013. The management's discussion analysis is prepared by the finance department, so that's something that allows you to reference what's happening, has a good narrative about what the district challenges are that are seen at the management level. As far as the numbers, at the end of the year, your cash was at 29.7. That was spread among principally, the general fund had 20.1, construction had 2.8, and you had 1.4 in the food service fund. As a comparison, the general fund had 17.9 million at the end of the prior year. Your general fund revenue was 101.4 million as compared to 98.8 the year before. That was principally driven by increases in tax revenue. It was 2.2 million, so that pretty much explains that change. Your general fund expenditures were at 98.5 million as compared to 97.6, so those are kind of just general operational changes. I am pleased to say that the fund balance increased by 2.6 million as compared to an increase the prior year of 95,000. So a good increase in the fund balance for last year. The year before, there were a pretty significant amount of transfers to construction. Those were down in 2019 versus 2018. We talked before about the pension and the other post-deployment benefits. Just to give you an update on that, as far as the CERS pension that you record on your financial statements, the unfunded liability for that pension system was at 6.1 billion. Your share of that was 32.9 million. As a comparison, the year before, that was at 5.9 billion, and your share of that was 31 million. You also record for CERS and the Teacher Retirement Medical Fund a liability on your financials. For 2019, that unfunded liability for CERS was at 1.8 billion. Your share was at 9.6 million. The Teacher Retirement was at 3.5 billion. Your share was 25.6 million. Just as a comparison, the CERS the year before was 2 billion unfunded. Your share was 10.6 million. The TRS was at 3.6 billion unfunded, and your share of that was 26.9 million. So the total unfunded did come down some, but nothing really that significant. Just a couple of final comments. Over time, you've invested almost $285 million in your plant, facilities, equipment, buses, those types of things. Your book value of those is right at 190 million. You owe 98.6 million in bonds, and you'll pay 7.4 million principal on those this year. So as far as the school comments, they were really good. I think we've only had maybe five total comments for the whole district. So was very happy with how that turned out. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to take those.
Does anybody have any questions? None, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Next is 7B, and that would be to create and ratify two 1.0 LBD teacher. Yes, thank you. So we need a motion to approve the 2019 audit report for Stiles, Carter, and Associates. Motion by Ms. Burford, seconded by Ms. Brock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. I know, I have to think about it. Okay, now moving on to 7B. Create and ratify two 1.0 LBD teacher positions.
And I can offer just a quick explanation of that. We've had four schools this year that we started out because of their numbers, the number of students qualifying for special ed. They were allocated a .5 special ed teacher. All four of those have increased in the number of special ed students, as students have met eligibility requirements throughout the year. So we want to increase all four of those up to a full 1.0. In order to do that, we need to add effectively two LBD positions, four halves, two whole positions. So that's what we have.
Okay, any questions? The motion would be to create and ratify two 1.0 LBD teacher positions. Motion by Ms. Burford, seconded by Mr. Rutherford. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. 7C. Hear and discuss the 2020-2021 school calendar recommendations. Deputy Superintendent, read these.
Good evening. You should have the calendar drafts one and two in front of you. It's about five months earlier than we typically discuss a calendar, but Mr. Gillum had a great idea of bringing this to the table earlier, so folks could ask for time off who are not working in the school system. Sometimes we get tunnel vision and just think about ourselves, but we have a lot of mothers and fathers who'd like to go on vacation as well, and they can plan those out. So we're getting this to you really early. We've got two drafts there in front of you. The calendar committee has come up with both of these. Typically, we try to give possibly three that we throw out, but I thought we'd just kind of keep it simple. It's an easier calendar this year than has been in the past. Draft one has a fall break, which you can see there, that is a week-long, and we just experienced our first-ever week-long fall break, and through my texts and emails, it was a huge success. So the calendar committee thought that we might try that again. The main things that people look at when they look at a calendar is when do we start? When do we get a fall break? When's Christmas? And when do we get out? So looking at those, August 10th and 11th will be the PD days, opening and PD days. Students' first day, which is what SFD stands for. Students' first day would be August 12th. That's typical. In the last couple of years, we have tried to start around then. Fall break would then look to fall around October the 12th. That's a Monday. And the committee came up with this last year and thought, that's probably what I heard the most from teachers, was that it was at the end of the nine weeks. So it was a great break. They didn't have to go back and reteach. Felt like they didn't. It was a very positive break for everyone. So the end of the nine weeks is the 9th, so the fall break would happen the following week. Christmas is an easy cutoff, the 18th is on a Friday, so then we'd have two full weeks off, holiday January 1st, PD on the 4th. That's also been something that the staff has asked for, is not come back full throttle on that Monday, have a PD day work session to get back in the groove and have the kids come back the following day. Spring break, looking at April the 5th, which is the first full week of April. Spring break, looking at April the fifth, which is the first full week of April. We, you know, we like to try to partner up with, with the college, with Eastern, because we do share a lot of kids and employees, but their spring break is so early because they get out so early, so. And folks who go to Florida typically doesn't get warmer until a little bit later, so March, the second, third week of March is just a little bit too early for, for us, so that's why we have it there. And then S L D, which of course is students' last day, would be May the twentieth, and then you have color-coded items after that, and all that is is for the state department for, that I have to put in for teachers' days, because they have to, by contract, get a hundred and eighty-seven days. This calendar shows one hundred and seventy-one school days. Why do you do a hundred and seventy-one? We have to do one seventy, so that gives us a day to bank for inclement weather or anything that may happen in an emergency. And then with the use of N T I, that typically will do a maximum of eight days there, and we have some flex days in between, so gives us about fifteen days to play with for weather before we start staring at June the first, which is always something we try to stay away from. Draft two does not have a week-long fall break, and that's probably where I need to end there.
Stop talking.
Just like to make it easy there. So this will go out for vote. If you all approve on both of these two drafts for all employees in Madison County, we'll send it out by Google, and I receive every vote and every comment, good or bad, and we get both. But the calendar committee has, has done a great job. Like I said, this one was much easier than this past year, but things that you didn't, things that I didn't think about for last year that the two folks on the committee came up with was the nine-week break. It was two teachers that were, that were on the committee, so that's why you have different folks looking at it, at different, different things, so. If, here to see if the two drafts are good with you, and then we'll move forward and vote. It will go out for those of you watching next week, so be ready.
So any more? Make a motion to approve. I don't think we need a motion for this. Just he presents it to us, and then when it comes back, we'll have to.
Y'all have any questions about it?
Great job.
I got a great committee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We don't get to vote.
We get to approve it.
Until later. We're just going to approve one now if y'all want to.
Think we'd better give them a chance. Okay, next on our agenda is the growth factor report, and Mr. Deputy Superintendent Randy Neeh will be giving that to us again.
All right, the growth factor report is, is something that we have to report to the state at the end of every second month of each school year, and that just kind of gives us a snapshot of where we are membership-wise and attendance-wise, and you add all that together. There's a whole lot of acronyms and things of that nature on the paper, and the definitions are bulleted down below. But what you all need to be looking at, and what, what really stands out to, to me, is the membership continues to increase, which that means our enrollment is increasing, and that's, that's good for all of us. The only dip that, that is on your paper here for the growth factor is when they change the, the date when you enroll in school from the October to, to August, and we took a pretty decent-sized hit there. That cost us two months of enrollees that we typically would have received, and we did not. So we're bouncing back in good shape. A A D A, the difference between membership is that's kids that are involved. A A D A is kids who are attending school, and if your attendance is increasing, then the amount of money that you receive increases as well. That's why we, we try to strive for ninety-five percent district-wide attendance. That's a pretty, I guess, pretty good target to try to reach with a district our size. If we got ninety-five, we would be elated. We typically stand around ninety-four, two, ninety-four, three. We've reached ninety-four, six before. That was a couple of years ago when the A A D A, if you see there in twenty sixteen, seventeen, was ten thousand, six, ninety-seven. We had a really good year of attendance there. So that's what I like to see, especially a couple of schools that I've been in the last two days, they actually have a bulletin board of their current attendance. It shows what grade and their attendance for today, for the week, which kind of promotes everybody, hey, let's, let's do it together. And if they're, and if the kids are in school, they're going to learn. If they're in the seat, they're engaged, they're going to learn, so it's, it benefits all of us. So as our membership increases and our attendance increases, we all benefit. So that kind of gives you, the membership, of course, right now is eleven, six, oh, eight. Current A A D A is ten, six, ninety-two. And again, this is just a, the second month snapshot. At the end of the year, typically in June, I will come to you with final numbers, and that's called the SAR report, and that's, that's the definite numbers of how much we've improved and how much money we've accrued for each kid. So currently, we're doing, we're really thrilled with how the school year started. Any questions about the growth factor?
Which school did you say had the bulletin board of the?
Cottle did, and I'm trying to remember. I knew you'd ask, because I forgot where it was at.
That's all right, shoot me an email.
I will. I know Cottle, because I was there yesterday, and I can't remember the other school.
And we report these?
I'll shoot you a text.
We report these how often to the state?
We only have, there's two major reports. It's the growth factor, and then the SAR is in June, but I run a monthly report that shows us how we do monthly at each school compared to last year and where they stand this year. So it kind of gives you a pretty good, pretty good gauge. Our attendance clerk at each school will provide those to the, to the principals.
And probably just a point that's probably good to make here is, when you talk about those two, two things, the growth factor and the SAR. The SAR is our attendance at the end of the year. We take that attendance, and that's what they base our seat money off of for the following year.
Right.
Then, after the second month, we do our, our growth report, and if the growth report is, i- if we had growth, which we did, they give us additional money to fund this year. So we're based off of last year's SAR plus the additional. So, so that's a, a very important thing, and we did take the hit a couple of years ago as those, they changed those dates. It's, we haven't received any growth, but it's, so it's nice to get that back.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving into our instruction report, we have our math coaches do a presentation.
Okay, well, we are here tonight to give an update on where Madison County Schools is in active implementation process using the Math Design Collaborative Innovation. I think this will be the third time that coaches have come to give an update, and we've grown in numbers, as you see. And then we've got, we've got some sure rooms back here. We're going to look at the innovation by the numbers tonight to give you a picture of where we are in implementation. Madison County is very fortunate to have five district-wide coaches to serve its teachers, and they are Tiffany Brock, Ashley Griggs, Sarah Schaefer, Denise Strange, and I'm Judy Winkler. The five of us have the opportunity to serve, it's coming slowly, six schools here in the district, and in those six schools, we also provide some coaching and help to the eight principals that are working within those schools. In two thousand and seventeen and eighteen, Madison County began this work with the Math Design Collaborative and Active Implementation with the two schools of Kirksville and Madison Middle. And then last year, two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, we were able to add two more schools onto our building implementation teams with Daniel Boone and Foley Middle. And then this year, once again, we were able to grow and spread into two other schools, working with Kit Carson Elementary and Silver Creek Elementary. And the intent of the coaches is to provide support to the math teachers in those buildings to help them implement high-yield instructional strategies in their schools. And so we currently have eight building implementation teams within those six schools that we're working with to promote that ma- high-yield math instruction in our schools.
So we have the five math coaches in the six schools serving those eight principals, but we have the honor of serving seventy classroom teachers, and that is teachers of, in the regular classroom and plus in the special ed classrooms. And when we were discussing the work and thinking about that, we had some very special teachers who asked to be able to speak to you all about this experience. So we have teachers from Kirksville Elementary here who were part of the very first team to begin this work, and so we have Becky Reister and Dottie Smith and Leslie Lilly and Greta Royalty, who are part of that team, that just wanted to give you some information about what we do.
Board members, first, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share our valued experience with ma- Math Design Collaborative work. We asked to have a chance to come share with you about our journey through active implementation. In the spring of two thousand and sixteen, Kirksville Elementary agreed to embark upon the great unknown as the first elementary school to implement Math Design Collaborative. Over the last three years, we have transformed our teaching practices, our classroom culture, our understanding in the importance of clarity in learning, and hopefully enriched the lives of many mathematicians. We quickly came to realize the incredible value of the partnership between classroom teachers and our instructional coaches. Coaches are able to create, research, and practice instructional strategies that classroom teachers do not have the capacity to do. As a result, our students get to spend time in a math classroom where everyone's opinion is valued. They feel successful on a daily basis and are learning to persevere through a productive struggle. What better way can we set up our students for their future pathways of success? Based upon our experience, we feel having an instructional coach in our building has been an integral part of our continued growth and our student achievement. It's taking its time. So imagine you're a student, a struggling student in a math class. As you sit in a classroom, you're probably thinking, please do not call on me, because you just want to hide. Or maybe you don't have to worry about that, because your teacher does all the work for you. They explain everything. All you have to do is sit and copy the work on your own paper, or just follow the procedures you've been given. Our goal for M D C students is for them to be on the edge of their seats, ready and willing to participate. This means that teachers have to build a culture in the classroom that allows for it. It's a fifty-fifty partnership between students and teachers. It's a true collaboration. So we have a little example of that in Connie Smith's kindergarten classroom at Kirksville.
What did you see? You and your partner, what did you two talk about?
Um, we talked about, um, two, and two, and it's four.
Okay, and you saw that in one of those?
Uh huh.
Do you support that? Did you see two and two? And she said two and two makes four? Zoe, would you please stand up? Would you prove to the class that two and two makes four? Let's watch her.
So when you have your two right here, and then two more people come along, it makes four.
So she decided to make it into a number story as well. So would you lead them through that again? Follow her, please.
When, when you have two, and when two people come along, it makes four.
So did she prove what she saw?
Yes.
Yes, she did.
Just a little snippet of what happens every day in these M D C classrooms. Kids are engaged, they're working, and they're having to prove their thinking. Their curiosity is piqued, because these teachers work so hard every day. And so they are a small number of the seventy that we get to serve every day, but they are also very important, because those seventy teachers represent, and it will come up in a moment, the two thousand, six hundred and five students that are part of the work that we get to work with and see the changes happening in those classrooms. So we are very fortunate that this, this teachers wanted to be a part of this, because they are definitely an integral part of making this work.
And as you can see in the pictures, the reason for everything we do is our students. And as Ms. Lilly said, the students have been introduced to a culture in their classroom that allows for them to have a productive struggle, allows them to persevere. You hear kindergarteners, kindergarteners talking about the word persevere, and you hear them in the cafeteria talking about math, and they're just, they're, they're more willing to, to delve into all that math outside of the classroom as well. So that's the reason we do everything we do. And because of your support, we have been able to scale up. The goal for all our students is to have the support they need to improve the teacher practices, and that in turn improves student achievement. So we appreciate all the support that the board has given us.
And with your continued support, the remaining Madison County schools will be our future innovators. And we're excited about that, because we already have schools that are reaching out for information about what we're doing, asking to be a part of the work. And, you know, that's, that's very exciting for us, because they're seeing the need for the work and the growth. And we just, we greatly appreciate your time, we appreciate your support, and all of that that you have for our process. It's the reason why Madison County Schools is the only district in the world that is this far in this implementation process with active implementation, and it's the reason why we have the level of success that we have. So we appreciate you. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate you as well, and your enthusiasm in, in what you're doing, as well as the teachers. And thank you for sharing with us just that little bit about the inside of the classroom, because we don't really get to see that, so thank you so much. Anybody have any questions for them?
I can just second, I mean, my girls, these are my girls' teachers over here, and they are fabulous. This, this whole thing, I just don't have all the words. It's just wonderful. I'm just excited for what you all are doing.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing, because there were some of us that were on board when this first started, and when we first heard about it, we wanted to rush and implement it everywhere, and they're like, no, 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 no.
Yeah, that was me.
We have to be measured with that, but we appreciate you coming, because it, it shows us the value in the, the investment that we're making in our students that's possible because of your all's dedication. So, so we look forward to, to just seeing what the future holds for the rest of the students.
So we're trying to do two new schools every year, is that right? Two more?
That's that continued support.
Here's the process that we take. We have the principals of these schools come and talk to the rest of our principals, because that's what we want. We want schools coming to us saying, "Hey, we want to be in this." So what we'll do, we have a district team who will take those inquiries into the process, those schools who say, "Hey, we would like to be in this." So we'll take those, and then what we do is we'll gather the data on those schools, and we'll look through that process. Then we look at our capacity, we'll look and see which schools, because Kirk School, this team, they're ready to support themselves now. They, they started first, they're ready now, they're a little nervous when I say that. But, but they are ready now to support themselves, because they can coach each other with a little support still from, from our team. So, so their coach is ready to move on. And so that, so we'll look at the capacity we have to bring on. So yeah, we'll probably bring on a couple more schools. And so that, that's kind of how that process works.
I know at the beginning of the school year, I went by and saw Ms. Heaton at Silver Creek, and she was very excited to get the math support. She was, that was one of the first things she said, said to me, is, "I'm so excited I get a math coach this year."
Is this, is this appropriate at the high school level, or is this geared more?
It sure is. And so, we kind of look at the need, and we kind of look, and we grow, and we tell all of our principals, all of our schools, our goal is to get it to all of our schools.
Well, we've reached over twenty-six hundred students, right? That's what we saw, so, I, I just.
Nine thousand to go.
Right. We're very thankful for you all, you all. The energy that you guys have is contagious, so we're thankful, very thankful for you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, moving on. Seven F is our construction report with Tony Thomas.
Good evening. We'll start with the Kindergarten Academy parking lot. It is complete now, and I know we saw some maintenance. People out there with Madison County the first few days directing traffic a little bit, but as I understand it now, Mr. Cash says traffic is flowing smoothly, so, and there's a picture of it as well, after it was striped. And you can just click through some of those pictures if you don't mind, but there's just another picture looking back towards Main Street. There's the owner-installed gates. And last time I explained that there was still some work to do, that they had to put in another drain, and here they connected a drain from the adjacent property, and everything's working good there. Some stri- all the striping's been put in now, and the crosswalk striping. And the buses, there's more buses parked up there on the gravel, those are the C-Set buses. And the light poles are installed now. I haven't driven by there at night yet, I assume they're working now, but they didn't have the heads on for a while, but I know Mr. Rohr and his staff has been out there working on those as well. So basically, that project is done. Any questions on the Kindergarten Academy parking lot?
I drove by there the other day, and I don't know if it was, if it's on us, or who, but the parking lot where the C-Set buses are, it looked like Mr. Lakes had brought some out for maintenance, and they're having to drive through the grass, because the entrance is so narrow. So there's, there's already ruts coming out, where they're trying to pull them out, because they can't swing, swing them around.
Interesting.
So that's maybe something we need to look at.
Did we discuss doing some signage on, on that side?
Yes. Yes, we've got. Yeah, we're getting designs right now.
And I drove by about 2:50 today, and there was no cars on the, you know, 25 there, so that was, there was a gentleman standing there with his vest on to direct parents where to go. It was well implemented, so.
The warnings were fabulous, too.
Good, good. Fantastic. And yeah, and we could talk to Madison County about potentially, that's just gravel that was put in after the fact. We could, we can put more gra- or Madison County can put more gravel in to tape off that, where the, where the buses are, yes, sir. Madison Central, the roofing is complete. You can see, I, I tried to get as broad a picture as I, I could to show so many, how big of an area there truly is, so that you can see that. I'm standing up on the three-story portion there, looking back over, and then I'm, I'm looking to the left there, towards the golf course, and so I'm up on top of the three-story portion there. Then I took a detailed shot, this is where the elevator is, you know, that was, that was an area where there was, I think, has been troublesome, so they did a really good job detailing that area in. Again, this is, you can see, that's the ATC in the background, that's the first area that they started on. And this is looking down on the cafeteria, so you can just see what, a huge area of, of work has been done. And the sheet metal, all the gutters and downspouts, they're ninety-nine point nine percent done, just a couple of things, and here's another, they did a really good work on, on the sheet metal. Now, when I say it's complete, all the drying, they, they had the coping come to the site, and then they, there's been some bad rain, and then some bad snow now, so. And in the last couple of days, they may even put some of this on, but that's basically what's remaining right there, is for them to get the sheet metal. But the roof's complete, the roofing material itself is complete, it's dried in, this is just the sheet metal that needs to be installed. I believe that's the last roofing picture. Yes, any questions on the roofing project?
I know on the roofing, we had, we had two different materials that we was deciding between. What were their comments on this? How did it work out? Was it good to go down?
They being the roofers?
Yeah.
It, it's easier for the roofers, they can go faster, it's easier, so they loved it. Their comments would be, they, they loved to go with this material, because it's easier, less, less labor in the end to put it down. And that's one reason the board saved money, is because there's less labor, labor involved. If I could, I'd like.
Go ahead.
As part of the construction report, I'd like to visit the Richmond ATC again, and if it's okay, I'm going to approach the KDE. I'll speak right up. I'm going to mention Berea first, because nothing changed. Basically, you had to do the, revise the BG1 for both projects, you remember. Madison County has subsequently sent those in, haven't heard anything back, but that allows us then to, you all hired us, we put the contracts in. We've taken what you've approved as a schematic design for Berea and submitted it as well, and we're waiting their comments. At Richmond, there continued to be some discussion last time about especially the siding of the project, and there's been a couple of other things that have happened since our last board meeting as well. Apologize for the red, but I wanted you to be able to see very well on this gray background. One of the, the big discussions was the siding. Of course, we had the, the facility like this the first time, I think, and then we swung it around to this direction, and now, and Mr. Rutherford, we, we looked at just turning it a little bit, but it was actually, the view, you can see these views, and these views, and these arrows are from the bypasses, you're all very familiar with, because this just really shows it in a good aerial view. So here's, here's the bypasses, and, and there's the bank. These lines represent the view that you get of the building. We pushed the building back a little bit. When, when you scoot it forward, this, this building actually starts blocking your view, and by backing it off a little bit, allows this view to be better. When you get to here, there's actually a little bit of a cut in the road, and of course, if you're going this way, you know, it's already to the side, so you're not looking at it so much anyway. But there is, there is a good view across there. Scooting it back als- from Merchant Drive, also, there's already a natural rise in the hill there, and kind of pushes what is going to be a tall building, pushes it up a little bit more, because it really drops off over here, so we don't want to put any extra grade. Now, we may minutely move that around, but for now, just wanted to let you know that this now is the front of the, front of the building, all facing, parallel with Merchant Drive, which is also parallel with the bypass, and you can see the good views there.
On a diagonal.
Yeah, not, actually not on a diagonal at all. We, and we looked at that, we had some discussions about this, we feel like this is probably the best one. And of course, I, I've gone, come back and discuss that with Mr. Gill and others as well. So this blows it up, I got rid of the red a little bit there, so it wouldn't be so bright. But here's Merchant, you can see, I'm not a hundred percent happy with this parking lot, just think that this is kind of diagrammatically. Since there's going to be, our discussion is that there's going to try to be a controlled entry as you get at a lot of your schools now. So they're not going to be coming in from 360, so there's only going to be one location. So if you had parking all the way around, then people could be basically walking all the way around the building to get to that one. I mean, we can put doors all over the building, but if there's only going to be one secure point. So we put most of the parking out front, so people can come to the front of the building and, and get in. So here, basically, this is the, the drive from the bank, we've got a road all, going all the way along the back, so you can, so, you know, Madison County, anybody can, may want to put up gates, so it doesn't become a cut through from somebody. But a simple drive around the back, and then everything feeds off of that, you can drive all the way around the building. There's a, a drive up closer to the building. Here's the storage building we talked about, with plenty of paving back here, for, that's where the larger overhead doors are, and some potential staff parking, or overflow parking in the, in the back as well. Not real happy with this yet, but for, for the schematic design, site design, just know that we've got parking out here, and we're trying to get 400 in there as well. If you go to the next slide. So now the building, the building has, has flipped, from what you were looking at the site there, it's, it's turned just like this, just so I can get it on one page. The entry at Berea and in the former Richmond design came out this end of the building. Since we've turned the building towards the bypass now, the entry's now going towards the front. So this will be coming, it's, it's pretty nice and dynamic, and I think this is kind of what you all wanted to begin with, and you've convinced me. But, yeah, and this is, this is the front of the building now, and the entry goes out in this direction. Really, nothing's changed except this area, this was much clearer on my screen. But you can flip to the next one, it's even a more blown-up picture of, of the lobby area on the next screen. That's fine. There we go. Yeah. So you can see, you've got a large lobby area here. Now, this lobby is, is larger than Berea's, just because naturally, when, when we turn it and did some things, we could have cut it off here, but it didn't have the same aesthetic dynamic. But we'd also talked about your all's trip, when you went up the Laurel County one, and this could be a good place for, you know, soft furniture, charging stations, things of that nature. This could be, you know.
Conference.
Yes, it, you could temporarily, temporarily put barricades there, and this could be a little conference room, so, so a lot of options there, including furniture and a larger lobby, just a meeting, if you wanted to. So I think this is really working out well, but everything else in the building is pretty much the equivalent of, of what's going on at Berea. These concessions did allow a foot or two larger than. So we can go to the next slide. And this is just more of the lab areas of the building, really not much change, except for the next slide. We talked about the welding shop last time, and Mrs. Brock had asked about the windows, and ironically, we had put some stairs and, and lockers out here, and of course, we worked that out with Mr. Pence, the ATC welder. But I think maybe the principal and others looked at it, and, oh, maybe, maybe there's been some other discussion, but they decided that they would really like to see windows for, for supervision and control between here and, and this classroom. So I spoke with Jacob Cecil about getting rid of the, I was saying getting rid of, moving the MDF room for the main distribution frame for all the technology upstairs into that mechanical mezzanine. Now, we'll, we'll put walls and keep it dustproof, and put cooling in there, and he's, and he's, he'll have his own, I was saying, everyone, they'll have, there'll be a stair, a, a good stair to walk up to get to there. He didn't have a problem with it. So we moved the lockers into here, they need a lot of lockers in welding, and that's what was out in front of here, we moved the stair to here, there's still a restroom, so there's a locker area. I know you haven't seen this yet, so welcome anyone's comments on this. Ideally, we would have liked to have lockers along the wall somewhere, where they were even back here, instead of in their own little area, but there's so many welding stations here, we'd have to, you know, push the wall out so far, there's only, only so much wall space in, in an area. And what we had done previously was actually kind of made more walls, but those were blocking vision. So, so this was, this is the only thing that's changed in the Richmond design, except for the front lobby area. So this would be the view from basically that first view I showed you, where, behind the bank. Of course, we don't have any green and trees and things like that. If you zoomed in on it, this would be the view, this is even taller now, you can start to see some of this, and little grid lines in there.
So that front door, Tony?
This is the front door, this is an eight-foot, that, and that door is eight-foot tall, to give you a little bit of scale, and this is about twelve feet in the air, so this is twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty feet.
And that's now facing the bypass.
And that's now, that's if, if you zoomed in right, your view right before the bank, Citizens Bank, that's what you would see, as well as the entire facade. So now that whole facade, this whole facade is facing the bypass. So, just a lot of visual there to see from the bypass.
Much improved. This is, this was really kind of what, when we talked about the property, really kind of what we were envisioning, so that it could be visible. I like the tone.
Great, great. That's just a closer view. This is if you're coming in from Four Mile Road, looking back in this direction. We still need to, we're going to work on that area there, it's a little blank right there. And then there's the big close-up shot of the tower. Now, there may be some, some more things as we get, and there's a details going on there, and where, and where letters and words are going, things of that nature, we'll work on as well. And I think that's the last.
I have a question.
Yes.
Back when we did Caudle, we made those big, pretty windows and big lobbies out in the front, and then when we sent it, they sent it back, said we had too much of that free space, I guess, or hallways and stuff. Do you think that will be a problem with?
You have a good memory.
I just remember it went from beautiful to.
Well, I've had, and I've had this discussion with Mr. Gill, we have been studying, they call it the space efficiency. The ATC doesn't have as well a defined efficiency space as elementary, middle, and, and high school, but the methods we're using, and that we're going to present to them, we're within the efficiency. The efficiency is seventy-four percent. If you have a gross square footage, ten thousand square feet, you can have twenty-six percent over that to take care of the walls, and the restrooms, mechanical rooms, and things of that nature. So that's a very good question. When we refine all this and send it in as a schematic, as long as you all are okay with this tonight, we'll make sure that we fall within that efficiency.
Every room has storage, right? Like, for the most, like carpentry or?
They all have a, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, every, every lab has its own storage.
Storage.
Yeah. Oh, and, and that's a good question, and I'll bring this up again. What we're doing is, like these stairs right here, every one of these classrooms on the large shop side, the high base side, we will put a mezzanine up top, where they can either go up a ship's ladder or a regular stair to get to a platform on top of the classroom, so there's a tremendous amount of storage there. And if you also remember back, on the site plan, this is Mr. Gill's idea, putting a storage building out back, so that all the things that you see outside of, not just Madison Central's ATC, but ATCs all across the state and across the country, there's a lot of stuff just out in the back parking lot, you all are going to have a building for those things to complete. So plenty of storage.
And the storage rooms that, that are there, the square footage of storage space is specified in the, in the regs.
Right, and we've met that, in what, in what you see in the plans here, there's tools and storage and grinding and parts locked, and we, we've met all those regs, but in addition to that, we're putting the mezzanines up on top of the classrooms.
Yes.
And there's additional out in the parking lots here.
Just after talking to all the teachers, they, that's what they really request.
Great question. This is what we, as, as long as everybody's okay with the direction this is going, this is what we will submit to KDE for the schematic. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do, do we have any idea how long it's going to take them to?
We have no idea.
Long.
I couldn't even venture a guess, I really couldn't.
Next is Mr. Woods and the comments report.
Good evening. As of October 31st, we ended with a reconciled balance of thirty-two million, eight-hundred-sixty-one-thousand, four-hundred-nineteen dollars and thirty-one cents. From the reports, you could see that we are still up. Part of that is due to having two years' worth of capital funds, that we are hoping they will eventually prove our BG1, so we can apply those capital funds to our ATC, our career center and our ATC project. You also have CDs that are maturing and flowing into our general fund balance, so we are slightly up as compared to this time last year. Of the reconciled balance, we have. Of the reconciled balance, we have $2,421,990.65 still in investments. The rates from those are from 2% to 3%. That is down from last month. Two and a quarter was our low. Our lowest CD, which was one of our local CDs, has readjusted because it matured in October. If you follow any of the things in the market and everything, the Fed did drop rates again, which does have an effect on CD rates that we can get. So, that CD did drop from two and a quarter to two, so that's the difference there. We, I have been having several meetings with local banks just discussing potential investment opportunities, things of that nature with our money for this year due to the regulation changes and we will put together, I will work with Mr. Gillum on plans for how we want to invest our funds and the best options to maximize investments for the district. As part of your packet, you also had a copy of the balance sheet and the revenue expense report for October 31st. Do I have any questions?
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the monthly financial report.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Brock, second by Mr. Rutherford. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think that's about the quickest to have done one.
I think so, too.
It's all because of the tie.
Next, we have our superintendent's report.
All right. Just a second, pull that up here, all right. Well, we'll start out, as we, as you saw, the plans there for the Career Tech Center, I get to the opportunity to go around the community several times. I've been asked to, asked lots of questions about these, asked to speak at different organizations, chamber events and so forth regarding these two pieces. And what I would certainly say, as you've heard me say many times, the community is extremely excited about the potential for these two facilities. And pleased me to be able to take the board to the Kentucky Tech Madison County Center on November the 4th. We had the opportunity to visit there and we appreciate Ms. Engel and the staff. They gave us a nice tour and got to see the programs that we're going to be able to move into these new facilities and it was great to see the wonderful things that are currently going on, but it was also very exciting to know how those programs will be able to grow and improve in a new space, so, so very nice. Also, last week, Mr. David Jagi was recognized by the Richmond Chamber of Commerce as the Educator of the Year, so I congratulate Mr. Jagi on that honor. And we've also come in close to wrapping up another fall sports season. We're very proud of all of our participants in all of that and we've had a few folks that really excelled this fall, specifically the college football team won the state middle school championship. Kiara and Connor O'Shea, both, brother and sister, won the state cross-country championship, KHSA. We also had the runner-up for the, for the boys' cross-country, that was Brady Masters. Maddie Neely was state runner-up in girls' golf and made first team all-state, so a very exciting fall sports season, just to mention a few. We also, and this is one of the most exciting parts about this, I think it was just yesterday or day before, we had six seniors at Madison Central sign national letters of intent to continue participating in college. And Madison Southern, I know they have a program for, where they're, they have five athletes signing next week. So, by the time everything finishes up this year, we're going to have over 30 student athletes participating at the collegiate level out of this graduating class. So, that's exciting stuff, good stuff for our students there, so congratulations to them. And also, it's the, it's the fall, can't let it fall past without mentioning our band programs and how wonderful they did. Madison Southern was a state 4A semifinalist and Madison Central was a state 5A runner-up, so we're very proud of them. And Tuesday of this week, we had the opportunity to host leadership Madison County and the district. I got to speak to a lot of our district leaders and we appreciate the chamber and the Richmond Chamber there and Mindy Goble and everything that they do with that program provides a good service for our, for our community and for leadership throughout Madison County. And then the last thing I would mention is Tuesday evening, then, we had a strategic planning event at Clarkmore's Middle School. Appreciate Mr. James Ray and his staff out there hosting us. We had over 90 people come together. Most of our board members were there, a lot of teachers, principals, and then community members, business people came together to talk about where, the direction that we're headed in Madison County schools, looking at the good things that are happening, the areas that we have, opportunities we have for growth. And it was just an exciting time. We're going to take the information that we got there, we're going to put that together into a good strategic plan, we're going to use that to guide our work over the next few years. So, we appreciate everyone being involved in that and that is my superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Next is comments from the board. Does anybody have any comments?
Just to kind of add on to the Tuesday night event, Gina Lakes and Erin, I know, were instrumental in putting that together. And what was so impressive, it was so very well organized, but what was so impressive was the fact that it was facilitated by students, the superintendent team task force, and they did an incredible job. Talk about well-spoken. They, they were just amazing. It was a pleasure to be involved in it, so I'm anxious to see the report. I know at our table, we were, we had some really good ideas going that everybody's already starting to implement, so it was an exciting time. Any time that I think that we can get together as a community and look at what everybody feels the direction we should be going, it's just productive and I was just excited by the whole thing. So, great job. Everybody.
It was exciting. I just want to follow up on the vocational school visit. It was very enlightening, not being over there since I was a student, so that's a long time ago, but some of those classes I didn't even realize was happening, especially when it moves on over into the Phillips Building. So, it was really an eye-opener to see what was going on and what we already had. And I also want to thank Mr. Cash because he gave us a tour of the maintenance facility and he is very organized over there and I just want to thank him for taking the time out to give us that tour. Yeah. Anybody else?
Yes, I agree with you.
You want your picture taken?
I agree. I just want to add on to that. It was impressive to see what our students and teachers are doing over there because we hear about it, but it's a new level when we get to see it.
Yeah.
So, thank you for, we had a lot of questions, I know, so. I appreciate you taking time out of your very busy schedules.
It was about a whole day, just about.
About a whole day. It was. We asked a lot of questions.
It was fine.
Ms. Engel did a great job.
Yes, she did.
Yeah. Anybody else? If there's no more comments, then make a motion, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rutherford. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cobb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned.